Good afternoon and welcome to the Thursday, February 14, 2019 work session of the Henrico County Public Schools Board. Members of the Board, you've seen the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
It's been moved by Mrs. Cox. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Augbrun. All those in favor of approving the agenda indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. The motion carries. Well, the agenda is approved. I should have begun with the most important business and as remind everybody that it is Valentine's Day. And has everybody gotten their sweetie or significant whatever something for Valentine's Day? Raise your hand if you hadn't so we can make sure and let your spouse or whoever know that you waited to the last minute.
[laughing]
That's exactly right. So, well, I guess we can stay late then. If everybody's got what they need, we can just stay as long as we need tonight.
That's not getting much response.
Not so fast. Okay. All right. Well, at this point, it's appropriate that we move into closed session for discussion of matters covered under items A1, A2, and A7 of section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia 1950 as amended pertaining to the following: the assignment, appointment, performance, disciplining, and release of contract for specific school board employees; the admission and discipline of specific students, including a request for religious exemption from compulsory education; in consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members pertaining to probable litigation involving employment matters where such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiation or litigating posture of the school board. Is there a motion that we move into closed session for those purposes?
So moved.
It's moved by Reverend Cooper. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. The motion carries. We'll now go into closed session for those purposes. Thank you. Members of the Board, at this point, it's important that we certify that only those matters that were disclosed in the motion to go into closed session were discussed in closed session. Is there someone who will so move?
I will move, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Cox. All those in favor of certifying the closed session that only those matters disclosed were being discussed in closed session were in fact discussed. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. The motion carries. Madam Superintendent.
All right. Thank you. For the first item, I have withdrawn the recommendation related to student case number 17-18-S-12 related to a student code of conduct violation for further review.
Thank you, Madam.
Next item, the Superintendent recommends that the school board approve the request for release from compulsory attendance of student case number 18-19-Re-8 based on bona fide religious beliefs. And as always, the names of students are protected under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act.
Thank you. Members of the Board, is there a motion regarding the Superintendent's recommendation for religious exemption from compulsory attendance for 18-19-Re-8?
All right. I was trying to cut you off. Yeah, so moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Augbrun. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Seconded by Mrs. Cox. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. The motion carries.
The Superintendent recommends that the school board approve the appointment of administrative personnel for the 2018-2019 school year.
Members of the Board, you've heard the Superintendent's recommendation regarding the administrative appointments. Is there a motion to adopt her recommendation?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Pike. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Augbrun. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. The motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. And the Board has just approved the following administrative appointments: Tiffany Farmer, Director of Operations and Student Services at an Achievable Dream Academy Highland Springs Elementary School; Erin Conme, Assistant Associate Principal, Laburnum Elementary; Courtney Ellis, Educational Specialist in Exceptional Education; and Andrew May, Human Resource Specialist in Human Resources.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. And we, on behalf of the Board, we think all of those who interviewed and conducted the Boards to determine who these folks were, we're very excited about them. And you're bringing them forward at the next meeting?
At our next meeting, at our monthly meeting, we'll have an opportunity to meet the new appointees.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. And for the next item, we have an update related to the proposed annual financial plan. And Mr. Sorenson is going to come forward to provide an overview.
Thanks, Dr. Cashwell. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. I do want to walk through a couple of slides really to update you on what is going on at the General Assembly. And of course, we'll answer any questions that you guys have on the budget. And there is a public hearing scheduled for 6 o'clock tonight, of course. But I did want to walk through, I think I have four slides for you. Just walk through those. So the House of Delegates and the Senate both released their budgets. They came out, the Council came out for that on Friday afternoon, late Friday afternoon. So I did want to walk through some of the 2020 amendments in their budget. So the House of Delegates, their amendments would reduce our state funding in the general fund by about $400,000. In our special revenue fund, VPI, the House of Delegates eliminates funding, so that's the million four reduction in our special revenue fund. The Senate's budget would reduce our general fund by about $1.8 million. And in VPI would reduce, I'm sorry, special revenue would reduce the VPI plus program by about $400,000. So walking through those a little bit. School counselors, the first category in this chart, column on the left has what our current funding ratios are. Then it walks through the Governor's Budget, the House amendments, and the Senate amendments. So you can see that the House did not change what the Governor proposed in his budget, but the Senate did change their funding staffing ratios for school counselors. And it's indicated by school level on that chart for you. Compensation supplement, there were changes in both the House and the Senate amendments. So the Governor, again, he proposed 5% over the biennium. So that's what we've been working on to this point. The House did change that a little bit, so they're leaving 3% effective July 1, 2019. And then an additional 2% would come on effective January 1 of 2020. So it's about six months in there where, before the extra 2% comes on to get to the Governor's 5%. And so that would reduce our funding. We'd have to pay for it later on because it gets annualized in subsequent budgets, but for 2020, it would reduce our funding. And then the Senate, they gave a little flexibility to school divisions, so they will provide funding, if you give at least a 3%, and up to a 5% increase over the biennium. So for school divisions that can't afford the full 5%, that gave them some much-needed The other two things I want to walk through, the supplemental lottery, that's an account we have, the state funds with lottery proceeds per pupil. And you can see the per pupil amounts, the current amount, again, in the left-hand column, and then with the Governor proposed, the House and Senate, so there were changes to the Governor's recommended budget. And that's money available to us to use for any purpose that we see necessary to operate the school division. So those three things are the general fund impacts, the VPI plus is, to us, is a special revenue fund. So the Governor, currently, that's a federal program. The Governor proposed state funding to carry it forward in 2020. The House eliminated that funding, and the Senate required a 25% match. The Governor's budget did not require a local match, the Senate version does. That's the decreased funding in that amount. I do want to point out, it doesn't say on the slide, but the Governor's budget is not at the current level, but it is, it is a substantial amount to carry the program forward. We'd have to look at how we're spending that money currently because he did reduce it a little bit from our current amount. And I'll be glad to answer any questions on these items or anything else that you all have regarding the budget.
Thank you. Members of the Board, are there questions? If there, none from the others. I do have one about the lottery funds.
Yes, sir.
I thought, where does the lottery money go if it doesn't go to schools?
There are several state programs that are funded with lottery proceeds. This is just one of those programs.
So, so does it still go to education?
It does. Yes, sir. It's just a different category in the state budget.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
But all of the lottery funds go to some education?
That is correct.
Category?
Yes, sir.
All right. It's just, okay, understood. Thank you. Anything else? Anyone? Yes, Mrs. Cox.
Do we have an idea of when we will know better, how this all is going to shape out?
We should know by the end of next week.
End of next week? Yes, okay.
All right. Thank you. So, update, but stay tuned.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. All right. There's nothing else?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Sorenson. Next, Dr. Bray is here so that he may both share an update of proposed changes to the middle school math pathways for the 2019-2020 school year, and then offer a chance for questions before I'll be asking for your approval of this proposed change. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, and Dr. Cashwell. I'm pleased to bring forward a proposal for the modification of our middle school math pathways curriculum for the 2019-2020 academic year. The proposed changes to the current pathway reflect our continued efforts to increase both access and opportunity for students to reach Algebra I prior to the ninth grade. The revised mathematics pathway addresses content changes reflected in the 2016 standards and provides the necessary curricular supports to ensure student achievement. The proposed revisions also bring us into alignment with other divisions throughout the region. On the left side of the graphic, you will see our current pathway for a student entering middle school, having completed Grade Five math in the fifth grade. Previously, under the 2009 standards of learning, students who successfully completed Course Two in the seventh grade were considered Algebra Ready. Changes set forth in the 2016 math standards of learning reflect a more scaffolded approach with some student content previously taught in Grades Six and Seven now shifting to the Grade Eight Course Three, which is now representative of a true pre-algebra course. In order to guarantee continued student success and access to upper-level coursework, we propose two pathways representing one option per grade level in Grades Six and For the first pathway, students are identified either by teacher recommendation or by parent request. The recommending teacher can be either the general education teacher or the special education teacher. Once identified, students must meet three of the five placement criteria. The criteria for placement includes successful completion of Course One, passing SOL scores for Grades Five and Six, NWEA score of 230, student work characteristics aligned to the math process standards, such as the ability to problem solve, and teacher recommendation. Identified students who meet the placement criteria would then take the Accelerated Math 78 course in Grade Seven, thereby allowing the student to take Algebra I in Grade Eight. For the second pathway, similar to the first, students are identified by teacher recommendation or parent request. Identified students must meet two of the three placement criteria.
Can I interrupt you for just a moment?
Yes, sir.
Because some folks may follow along with this otherwise. That first pathway you discussed on the slide that's presented here, is that the one on the right as we look at the slide?
So if we're looking on the left for the first pathway?
Right.
You'll see the arrow going over to the Accelerated Math 78, which is highlighted in red.
So that was what you just finished describing for us?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
For the second pathway, similar to the first, students are identified by teacher recommendation or parent request. Identified students must meet two of the three placement criteria. Criteria for placement in the Summer Bridge Program include successful completion of Course Two, passing SOL score on the Grade Seven Course Two SOL, and teacher recommendation. Identified students who meet the placement criteria would be eligible for the Summer Bridge to Algebra Program. Consistent with the Henrico learner profile, the Summer Bridge Program offers parents and students voice and choice in terms of delivery format by offering both a face-to-face and online option. The in-person bridge will be delivered through our existing Summer Essentials programming. The online option will be available through a customized course delivered through Edge Annuity. Students taking the online version will also have additional support through an assigned Summer Essentials math teacher. For students who select the online format and struggle, a face-to-face option would still exist through the second session of Summer Essentials held in mid-July. It is our intention that through the new Accelerated Math 78 course and the Summer Bridge to Algebra programming, that students now have multiple opportunities to reach Algebra I prior to the ninth grade. It is also our goal to provide the curricular support and scaffolds necessary to ensure student success as they access the more rigorous high school curriculum. At this time, I'm now happy to take any questions or clarify any of the content.
Thank you very much. Members of the Board, are there questions? Our clarification requested. So, I have, go ahead, please.
What's the participation like in the past with this during the summer? I'm just curious about the summer component.
The summer, the Bridge to Summer is a brand-new component for us that currently doesn't exist.
Okay.
So one of the things that has changed is that Course Two. So if I go back to our current pathway, under the 2009 standards of learning, Course Two, if you successfully completed Course Two, you were considered Algebra Ready. That wording is actually in the state documents. With the 2016 standards changing, Course Three really now becomes more of a pre-algebra course. So content previously taught in Course One and Course Two, some of that content is now shifted. This brings about the need for that Summer Bridge. And one of the things we want to do is we want to make sure that our students have increased access to that Algebra I course. And so if you look currently, there's only really one option in our current pathway, and that's Course Two. Under the new proposed pathway, you'll see an option for students Grade Six and Grade Seven.
How about teaching staff? We?
Yes, sir. We have the Summer Essentials, teaching staff is in place, we have funding for that existing.
Thank you. Yes, Mrs. Cox.
How many students do we project having the summer, for the Summer Bridge programming? 200, okay. From all over the county?
Yes, ma'am.
And so, and the prerequisite, then, the teachers will choose which students need to?
Teacher or parent request.
To encourage, okay. Or teacher request, or parent request?
Teacher recommendation or parent request.
That's good. Thank you.
And again, that teacher can be the general educator or the special educator.
Very good. Anyone else? So, what are we doing to make sure that parents are aware of this new path?
Well, contingent upon your approval, we will advertise it on the website. We have engaged our counselors within our school, and our math specialists will be engaging our teachers so that we can really start identifying students to take advantage of this pathway.
Because it's, it's not, it's not a great universe, it's not a tremendously large group of students that we really are looking at it. I mean, it's just those students in those particular grades where it would work so we can air it down there. And then the teachers ought to be able to identify rather quickly, but also think that it needs to be very proactive in making sure that our parents are aware of it so that they know. In effect, this is the first gate that a student has to get through in order to meet, in order to participate in some of those higher-level courses that really can spell success beyond high school. So we don't want, parents often say, "If I'd only known." So we want to make sure that they do know. So anything that we can do to help in that regard, I know that, and I see Mr. Jinks there willing to help as well.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If you don't mind, I have one comment. I'm wondering, in that vein, if this would be appropriate for our back-to-school orientation, like, starting, because I hear this all the time, "If I'd only known," like, fourth and fifth grade, so that when we're, have our captive audience of our parents, that we tell them these options so that they can do their planning for middle school and high school courses. I don't think it's too early to start that in the fourth, fifth grade timeline. I mean, I've actually had parents ask if they could have more information regarding specialty centers at that same time because they are thinking down the road. So add that to the, to the information we give them early on. Everly do?
And to Mrs. Augbrun's point, particularly our fourth and fifth grade teachers in those, not just back-to-school, but in the parent-teacher conferences, because those are the parents that are often say, "If I'd only known." And there, there may be some students that are, that if they know that this is an option, the parents can help push and pull, and everybody works together.
Right.
It's a little bit like identifying students for gifted services in that, you know, the parents are involved, but the teachers are involved, but also the parents. And not everybody has, that second child always has advantage because you know what you missed with the first one. And sometimes I think we do that as well. So whatever we can do, Madam Superintendent, to help in that regard, I think the Board would encourage it.
Yeah, absolutely. You bring up excellent points. It's one thing to create access and opportunity entry points such as this with the Summer Bridge programs, but making sure we're building awareness throughout, really, it's the K-12 experience. And elementary school is not too early to begin having those conversations and helping students see a trajectory and a pathway and understanding the courses that they select in middle school have an impact. So we're, in conjunction to this, looking at how we can strengthen our academic and career planning process to involve students and parents earlier in these conversations. So.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
I completely agree with what Dr. Cashwell was just saying because we need to make sure that parents understand the importance of that Algebra Two and building the foundations for that successful pathway on up through high school. And it starts, starts down in elementary schools, we all know. But I think that many parents don't really understand. They may be thinking of that model of when they were in school and that Algebra I was, you know, ninth-grade class or such. And so it's really important for them to, to understand that the Summer Bridge will help their student with the foundations.
Final question for me, anyway, is, so with the Summer Bridge program, I understand it's sort of two components. There's an online component and a face-to-face component. So where will the face-to-face component be offered? And how are we making certain that it's offered even if you have a pocket where there's maybe just a handful of students that, that are interested or that are, that need that additional assistance, to make sure that there's that opportunity across the board?
So it would fall under our existing Summer Essentials programming, and that programming is offered at three different locations throughout the county.
Okay. And I just, and I think that's great. I think that one of the things we've got to remember, these are, are middle school students, and it becomes difficult, often, particularly, not, it's across the county, but there's great distances between places where I live. And we don't have the traffic, but we do have the distances. And it becomes, with a middle school student in particular, sixth-grade student or a sixth, becoming seventh-grade student, I, many parents think of them as they're, they're just souped-up elementary students, sort of Mrs. Cox's point. And so the notion that somehow, I'm going to now begin to have to transport my student to these various places, we just need to be mindful that because it is a gatekeeping, a gate that you got to hit, that we make sure that we don't have a blind spot for those students that are having, for whatever reason, difficulty assessing that. So whatever, we just need, if we need more, if we need more locations for some reason and more access to it, we should anticipate that and try to make it available.
Yes. Should the Board approve the pathway change and the addition of this option for students, we'll definitely make sure that we're thinking through the access points to make sure students have quality access.
Thank you. I think it's, I think I can, I guess this is an action item, so we'll be calling for a vote on that.
Yes. If, once we're finished with questions, yep, I would. Are we?
Are there any, is there any other information anyone needs before we make a decision and you're able to cast a vote? If not, then do you have a recommendation for us?
All right. So given the overview and your opportunity to ask questions on what was presented, I recommend that the school board approve the proposed change to the middle school math pathways for the 2019-2020 school year, of course, beginning this, with that Summer programming piece.
Members of the Board, is there a motion to adopt the Superintendent's recommendation regarding the middle school pathway, math pathways?
So moved.
Thank you. Reverend Cooper is there, second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Cox. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries. Before we leave that, I would just reiterate that a great plan executed averages, an average result. So it seems like a really well-thought-out opportunity. And, and now that we've adopted it, it's got to be executed with fidelity and aggression.
Yes. Well said. And we'll bring back some information related to our next steps, advertisement, et cetera, as we move forward.
And maybe at that point, if we could also bring back what you would suggest when we review it in a year, is it successful or not? You know, not only so we identified there's possibly 200 students, but, so what, how are we going to say?
Yes.
Now, what are we going to look for to determine whether we spend our time and money wisely?
Certainly bring back some attendance data and also how well that prepared students to the next step in their pathway.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. For the next item, the Superintendent recommends that the school board accept the $495 grant award from Virginia Professional Educators to Verina High School.
Members of the Board, you've heard the Superintendent's recommendation. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Cox. Is there a second?
We're making sweat there.
Second. Seconded by Mr. Pike. All those in favor of adopting Superintendent's recommendation regarding the Virginia Professional Education Educators Grant Award indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you. Next, I bring forth a recommendation that the school board accept the $7,270 grant award from No Kid Hungry Share Our Strength to School Nutrition Services.
Members of the Board, you've heard Superintendent's recommendation regarding the No Kid Hungry Share Our Strength Grant. Is there a motion we adopt her, regarding her recommendation?
So moved.
It's been moved by Mrs. Augbrun. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Cooper, Reverend Cooper. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. And no child should be hungry any longer.
Thank you. And a final grant opportunity this evening, I recommend that the school board accept the $60,000 grant award from the Virginia Department of Education to Glen Lee Elementary School.
Members of the Board, you've heard Superintendent's recommendation regarding the Virginia Reading Corps Grant Award. Is there a motion regarding her recommendation?
With the pleasure, I make a motion.
It's been moved that we adopt Superintendent's recommendation by Reverend Cooper. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Augbrun. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. The motion carries.
Right. Thank you. And next, we have a number of items under operations related to the award of construction contracts. And Susan Moore will come forth should you have any questions as I bring each of those items forth. For the first item, there's a request that the school board award construction contracts for the dedicated outside air unit replacements to Chamberlain Mechanical Services Incorporated in the amounts of $373,000, $373,811 at Ash Elementary School and $366,157 at Ward Elementary School, to, and to JR Mechanical LLC in the amount of $219,430 at Baker Elementary School.
Madam Superintendent, JRC Mechanical, just for the record, so we're clear.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. That was a mouthful.
That was easy for you to say.
I'm telling you.
All right. Members of the Board, we've heard the Superintendent's recommendation regarding the contracts for outside air unit replacements at the schools she outlined. Is there, are there any questions? Is there a motion to adopt Superintendent's recommendation?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Augbrun. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Pike. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
All right. And for the next item, hopefully the acronyms and dollar amounts will roll more smoothly. I request that the School Board award construction contracts for HVAC renovations to Chamberlain Mechanical Services Incorporated in the amount of $45,847 at Freeman High School, and to Air Tech Solutions Incorporated in the amount of $349,500 at Shady Grove Elementary School.
Thank you. Members of the Board, you've heard the Superintendent's recommendation regarding the construction contracts for HVAC renovations at these two schools. Is there a motion to adopt Superintendent's recommendation?
So moved.
Been moved by Reverend Cooper. Is there a second?
Seconded.
It's been seconded by Mr. Pike. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Next is a request that the School Board award construction contracts for electrical service replacements to Electric Controls and Maintenance Incorporated in the amount of $105,800 at Fair Oaks Elementary School, and to Ebenezer Electric LLC in the amounts of $80,216 at Highland Springs Elementary School, and $33,770 at Mayberry Elementary School.
Members of the Board, you've heard the Superintendent's recommendation regarding awarding of the construction contracts for electrical services at these schools. Is there a motion to adopt Superintendent's recommendation?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Auger. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Pike. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. The motion carries.
And the final item I bring forward this evening is a request that the School Board approve the stormwater management agreement between the County of Henrico, Virginia, and the County School Board of Henrico County, Virginia, at Freeman High School.
Members of the Board, you've heard the Superintendent's recommendation regarding approval of the stormwater management agreement at Freeman High School. Is there a motion that we adopt Superintendent's recommendation?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Pike. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mrs. Coe. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. The motion carries. And I believe that concludes the Superintendent's matters tonight.
It does. That concludes items. Thank you.
Thank you. So with that, Members of the Board, we have any unfinished business? And there being none, how about some new business? Mrs. Coe?
I have something. Just wanted to share some good news that I think many people have probably already heard from the RTD and out on social media. But I had the pleasure yesterday of spending several hours at the General Assembly, and I was there while the House Bill 1652 was passed through the House. And that is our school calendar bill, as we call it. So it is passed through both the House and the Senate, and we'll be waiting for the Governor to sign. It is the bill that eliminates that post-Labor Day school start requirement. And so I know, I've been on the School Board now eight years, and we've been working on it for eight years, and I'm sure it was eight years before that. And there were some people, some legislative liaisons and such, yesterday, that, you know, it's been 25 years that we've been working on this. There is three components to that, and I was just going to mention them briefly. And first is that school boards that do not currently have a waiver may start school up to 14 days prior to Labor Day, and must close schools from the Friday before Labor Day through Labor Day. So it's four days. School boards that have a waiver, that is not us, in case anybody in Henrico County was wondering, that they can continue with their waiver. Okay, so I skipped that part. And then, lastly, school boards that have had a waiver pursuant to blah, 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 they get to continue it. And so the whole gist of it is that's 14 days before Labor Day is the soonest anybody there can start. So this, this really does give us the opportunity to, you know, have that conversation now, not in a theoretical sense, for our constituents. It helps to level that playing field for our all-students in Virginia, because as of last year, over half of the students in Virginia are starting their, you know, two weeks before Labor Day. So it's, we really can carry on some meaningful discussions now in our, about future school calendars. And I just would like to thank those people, and of course, Bev Lamy, our amazing legislative liaisons, but so many people that have gone down and testified and have helped through the years and advocated for the so-called repeal of the King's Dominion law.
Well, thank you for that report and for that, that good news. And I, and I just would add and point out that while they're, during, if we were to head that way during a transition period, there may be a time when the summers would be shortened until we make the full move, if we were to decide to do that to the 14 days. But ultimately, the time off from school would be the same, it's just shifted by two weeks. So because I have heard folks say that you shorten in the summer, and to acknowledge